I'm ready to order. On my far right is Tony Kenahan, James Noyes, Jerry Stetson, our recording secretary Donna Carter, and our town planner Tracy Aldrich, and I'm Hugh Hurley, the chairman. This is a continuation of a public hearing for MJM Construction Corporation for the site located 630 Mammy Street. All right, I'll turn it over to the proponents to bring us up to date on what's going on.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Scott Farrier from Home Run Engineering, and Manny Gudjina from MJM. Can't watch a lot of the trace. So, I think when we did last time, Mr. Chairman, the technical producer project, we were already thinking of you guys. At the time, we were waiting for a final review from Pat Brennan, and we received that on Monday, I believe. So, we've got Pat's blessing with a couple of smaller conditions, not nearly as much as we went through on the Phase One of the project. But it's just, you know, a few things to go over that Pat Brennan wanted. I think that's, we didn't have one of the plans last time. He wanted a specific Cape Cod berm to be shown to separate the gravel portion of the parking area from the paved portion of the parking area. So, we've done that. From our discussions at the Phase One part of things, we have no parking signs proposed, no vehicular parking signs along the gravel portions of the parked area.
Okay, Scott, just a minute. We have, are these the final plans? What's the revision date?
Eight twelve.
Okay, these don't have revision dates.
At all.
Is that what these are?
These are the last meeting. I'm not sure what the eighth one that is.
No, these are the old ones.
The one I got here is seven twenty now.
I had brought all of those. I took down home, so I was gonna put it back.
Yeah, I think these are all the same, Mr. Chairman. All of them. You know what? Making messy a pile later. Thank you. They brought the blocks at the last meeting, Mr. Chairman. Yep. So, these are seven twenty-nine.
Okay.
So, there's one more revision after that, but all it was, was Pat just asking for a specific detail on the Cape Cod berm. So, those are pretty much the final plans.
Okay.
So, as I said from the last meeting, we added, you know, signs along the gravel areas on...
Okay, is this, I've got a report here from Mr. Brennan.
Yep.
August nineteenth, is that the latest one?
That is the one.
Okay, can we do it in order that's on here so that...
Sure.
That way we can kind of go along and I can check them off as we go.
Go ahead. Oh, you want me to go?
Yes.
All right.
Yeah, I wanted you to go by this.
I just always assume you aren't joshing, I'm just kind of going along.
No, you're telling the story to us.
Right, good.
I want to listen and you're gonna talk.
Thank you. I would've just sat here with my head down, wondering when you were gonna get started. All right, so number one, to better capture the runoff from the paved surface, we recommend a Cape Cod berm at the western edge of the proposed pavement. So, we've added that, and there's a detail on the detail sheet that Pat wanted. Proposed limited pavement should be shown, that's number two. Again, that's shown and labeled with that heavy Cape Cod berm. Number three, again, is a note that's specific to the Cape Cod berm that'll be placed monolithically with both paving courses so that stormwater will be addressed at all times, just so typically wait for the finish coat.
Did you put that there too? I know somewhere in here.
Yep, the note has been added to sheet C four.
It's a detail.
And the detail is on sheet C nine, which I don't think, thank you, which I don't think you'll have on your plan, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, but you did put it on there.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Just so that whoever does the work will see it.
Yep, there it is right there.
Yep.
See the height on it?
It's three inch.
Three inch?
Yep. Yep. Number four is talking about the infiltration system. The proposed isolator row provides total suspended solid removal. It does not provide removal of grease, oil, or other petroleum-based products. Due to the site being within Zone Two, we recommend some type of oil-water separator. So, we added an oil-water separator, which is shown right over here in line before you get to the infiltration system. Number five, stormwater management has a fifty-foot setback from infiltration facility to a surface water, which is a wetland. The level spreaders should be shifted to be fully outside the fifty-foot buffer zone. So, that was this one here before we added a little bit inside the fifty foot. So, we just shifted that level spreader to be fifty foot out. So, he says address. Number six was the proposed level spreaders are specified to be different widths. He just wanted to have the details show the two separate widths, the spreader in the back is five feet wide, the spreader on this portion of the property is only, is ten feet wide, so there's a difference. He just wanted to specify that on the details.
Okay, hold up for a minute. Tracy, I saw that he emailed it from the Concom. Do we have a copy of that?
Yes.
And I don't, did you get, did you get it?
I thought I sent it to you, but...
And I was, and there was one from Mr. Brennan that everything had been achieved.
I don't think I figured it might be that, but I did see that as well.
Okay, I just want, for the record, that we received a letter from Mr. Brennan saying that everything that had been asked for had been done. I just wanted, I just wanted that into the record. I want you to still tell us about it.
I understand.
But I want it understood that you have achieved it. You're just bringing us up to date.
Exactly, and that was August nineteenth, was the date of his final report.
Oh, exactly, that's what I'm looking at, okay.
Yep. Number seven, the proposed filterment erosion should be shown more clearly. The line types for the filterment are now different. So, that's the line with the X going around the property for the filterment, for the erosion Number eight, understand it's six of the compliance with stormwater management. It is stated that the site is not located within a critical area, yet it is within a Zone Two, so that was a note that we just needed to address, the note typically says it's not an area, it should have been in the area. Number nine, post-construction best management plan includes maintenance for bio-retention basin and occult chamber. Those have been eliminated from this project, so he just wanted to address that in the O and M plan, just remove those from the O and M plan. All right, here's one. The zoning bylaw does not allow the storage of liquid hazardous materials in all liquid petroleum products unless the storage is above ground or on an impervious surface and in containers with an approved and protected structure with a containment system designed to hold ten percent of the total possible storage. Whichever is greater, therefore, the board, if the board should approve the special permit, recommend this be a condition of approval. And we acknowledge that, and are fine with that. So, just to answer to that, and again, a segment that came up in our Phase One project, that's when we discussed with the board the addition of the eight-inch-high concrete wall, basically around the, within the building, just to store any kind of materials like that, that Manny would have inside the building for, for light repairs. So, we have that right here at the bottom, again, similar to what we did there, proposed eight-by-eight concrete containment area with six-inch concrete garden. So, that's what we had talked about on the first one, so we added that. The board approved the special permit. We recommend a general condition that the prohibited uses listed under zoning bylaw should not be allowed on-site except for the storage of hazardous materials that comply with the conditions stated in number eleven above, which says it should be on impervious surfaces, which we agree with that. Number thirteen, motorized vehicles and equipment that have the potential to leak should not be stored on the gravel surface.
Where is the gravel surface? Let me just point it out.
Right on the backside. So, that heavy line is the Cape Cod berm, so the entire front is paved, the backside is the gravel.
So, it'll be just for empty trailer parking?
Just empty trailers, exactly. And as I said, we've got the signs that we talked about, yeah, we've got the signs kind of scattered throughout the site like we had talked about, just to specify no vehicular parking.
So, the tractor will be disconnected and it'll be an empty trailer?
Exactly. Yep. So, again, motorized vehicles should not be stored on the gravel surface. These vehicles and equipment should only be stored on impervious surface. Should the board approve the special permit, recommend this be a condition. We acknowledge that and agree to that. A zoning table should be added, which we added to sheet C four. And then he also had a question about existing utility poles that are on the site that feed the existing solar canopy. He just wanted to know if we were moving them or exactly what we're doing. So, our response was the utility poles are gonna remain, and they'll be wallets placed around them if necessary, if they're in the...
Are they just for supplying light, or do they actually supply power to anything?
They supply the feed of the power.
To the buildings?
No, from the solar panel. To the solar panel feed.
Yep.
Oh, that's right.
Just for the solar.
Okay. I just wanted, you know, clarify what they were.
So, that was it, Mr. Chairman. That was the rundown from Pat's comments from the nineteenth. So, as I said, the vast majority of them, you know, he finishes with, you know, items addressed, except for the last four of them that should be addressed in the conditions if the board votes to approve it at that point, so...
And so, and conservation is, everything is...
Yeah, conservation, we closed out last night. We got the letter on Monday, and they closed it last night.
Mr. Chairman, I just, in the letter that the, or the email that the conservation agent sent today, the only thing that they had said is it was approved, but there was a, you were gonna move the...
Replication area.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, that will be an update that'll be...
Yep.
So, is there conditional approval?
Yep.
Okay.
So, basically, what we're trying to do is make the two wetlands from both pieces of the property in the same area, so when we go into the replication, we're just serving one area, not two separate areas.
Yeah, so I think, I think that's about it, Mr. Chairman. The, you know, again, we've got the contractors building, the floor drains that go out to the two-thousand-gallon tight tank. I think, again, originally, we talked about, originally going back to Phase One, we talked about a thousand-gallon tight tank, and we kind of kicked it around during our discussion, and Manny agreed that it should be a two-thousand-gallon tight tank with the alarms. So, that was a condition on the Phase One part, so we've added that to this one as well. So, it goes from the floor drains to an MWRA oil/gas separator, and then into the tight tank.
And these are gonna be the same-sized buildings?
Yes. Yep. Yep. And again, it's just that one building, same as the other one, and that will, you know, that's just a safeguard for those light repairs that he might do inside the building. Nothing out on the, nothing outside of the building, just inside the building.
And that tank will be inspected regularly?
Yeah, it says yearly. Again, the conditions from the first one said an annual inspection that has to be, I believe it was turned into the building inspector, not you folks. I think it was going to the building inspector. And then, if the alarm does go off, you're supposed to be notified. The planning board is notified if the alarm goes off, not in the middle of the night, but like the next day.
I can send it to him.
In the middle of the night?
Yes, anytime. Day or night.
We'll put his number right on it.
In fact, I'll make a motion, and it goes to him.
Condition twenty-seven.
He's ignoring me.
Yeah.
This project just got unapproved.
Yeah, exactly.
I see it's a couple people there. Is anybody from the, I can't, all I see is legs. This is a public hearing, does anybody have anything they want to say or concerns?
No.
Okay.
The guy in the back, yeah, his turn last night, I think, so...
Yeah, he's in the back.
Ten A.
Oh, okay. All I can see is legs.
All I can see is, never mind.
Okay. All right.
Got nowhere else to go, John, so...
I know, that's okay.
Okay.
We'll state the plans.
We have to.
We've done what you actually added.
Yep. You can dig that, that's phenomenal. Pat's report.
You know, actually, I had it somewhere. Yeah, I had it. I didn't...
You didn't dig deep enough?
Yeah, no, but I had it, that's, I was going, that's what I wanted to get. Okay, we have to make some findings.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to remind that the, this is going through the zoning board to approve the use, and I recommend they do that prior to the planning board giving their final, if they're inclined to do their final findings.
Okay, so they're doing the use?
They're doing the use on this one for the contractor's office and storage yard, and planning board will be doing the site plan, and the special permit for activities in the water resource.
Okay, so, wait till the use is done.
Well, the thing is, I mean, I went back to Tracy, but the thing is, when the, the zone, Mr. Lucini was, was they didn't want to close because they wanted this, if there was any more changes that you guys wanted. So, if you don't close, then we're just gonna go back to them, he's gonna approve it, and we're gonna come back here and close it.
We went there, you know, we had one meeting, and they, he did want to wait for everybody else's reviews to be done.
So, can we approve it as subject to...
Typically, it should not be mentioned on another board's approval, but I think the understanding is how we've been kind of doing it with these split reviews.
But we've changed the bylaws, so the change is in the books.
It is, but they applied when it was still the other process. So, I think that...
We gotta get these that are in, you know, in the pipeline out of the way, and then we'll, we'll be going into the new...
Yeah, but we have, by vote of the townspeople, accepted.
Yes, but they were in before.
I understand that, but I mean, I can't see not being able to vote on it as subject to...
Just best practice on...
I mean, we can't not, I, we could vote on it, sign, vote on it, vote on the special permit and everything in the permit, but we don't sign it until we get a letter from the...
That's a slippery slope, too. Must be vote on it, it goes in...
But it's a slope we've done before.
Yeah, but all we're doing is the water resource portion of it. So, if they turn around and say you can't build one of these buildings, or change the number, it'd probably only be, unless it, there would be a diminished...
It'd be a reduction, right.
Diminished use of it.
Yep.
There wouldn't be that they would be giving anything more.
So, I agree with everything Mr. Farrier said in terms of the process, the way it was started, where we kind of landed. If we're being consistent with the process we followed with these split reviews, zoning approves the use first, and then the planning board approves the water resource and the site plan. Zoning was just waiting because without having had conservation or planning before hear it when they first, when they first went before them. If there were any substantive changes, that's what they wanted before they made their determination. So, I think it'll be a pretty, you know, a fairly quick process going through them, but that's the way we've been doing split reviews.
But are we gonna have to have another public hearing?
It would just be continued to that meeting when we make the final.
Yeah, I, I just, for what we're doing, I'm having trouble...
The water protection, water protection thing is totally different from zoning, and in the other way, water resource and drainage one is strictly under conservation. So, what we're, all we're acting on is they've agreed to do what was necessary for this project under water protection, right? As long as they agree on it, we've still gotta print it up, we've still gotta vote on, and still gotta sign it. So, we're still a couple of weeks away, and it's gonna be posted for what, twenty days?
Yeah, it's in a twenty-day appeal period.
So, if anything happened with, with the Board of Appeals, we're sitting with that twenty, twenty-day appeal period anyways.
Because basically, everything we're doing is, is related to that, as far as, we're not doing anything that affects the use of it, that's, because that's theirs. Who's doing the site plan review?
Planning board.
Planning board.
And also, just a reminder, we don't have the final plan either, the one that's revised through each twelve, I don't think we have.
No, not currently.
When would the next meeting be?
Fourth.
First.
September first?
Yeah.
The zoning board?
First meeting.
I won't be here.
I think you probably really want to do it after the zoning board, so the zoning board, it's not until September twenty-fourth.
Not one hour?
I think they were allowing the planning board and the conservation process to finish, so depending on how long that took.
The problem was, I think, the first meeting, the first meeting in September, they had maybe the Shell station.
They had a couple.
And something else, they had a busy agenda, the very first meeting in September, they didn't want us to go to the last meeting in August, not knowing if you folks would be ready, would be done, so they figured that one. But again, we're gonna, we're gonna run into the same thing, we're gonna go there on, to the ZBA on that date, and they're gonna say the planning board...
They'll get the feedback that the planning board and conservation are good with it, and that the final plan is...
Yeah, but if we haven't taken a vote, it is some legal feedback.
No, I just mean, just the general...
And let me just, Mr. Noyes just reminded me, he won't be here that meeting, September fourth, right?
Right, yeah.
He won't be here, so we will not have...
We need the four votes.
We need the four votes. So, I think we gotta do it tonight.
It's not, it's different than the process we've been following for these, but if you're comfortable doing it. I don't know if there's any ramifications with approving it.
Normally, we did a thing, we don't, it isn't dependent on what somebody else's...
The zoning has always been before the use, though, as we've been doing it in this split review?
Yeah, but they've never, they've never taken and thrown the ball back at us. They've always made a determination, and then it came before us to do what it's gonna do. They've turned around and says they're not gonna do nothing until we, the other boards read, which is...
They want it last, basically.
Yeah, which, that is, is not very common.
And I don't, and just if I'm recalling correctly, I don't think it was to have a final determination made, it was to make sure that the plan was supposed to final, so that...
That is correct.
It wasn't to necessarily make sure that your vote was taken first, it was just to make sure that there wasn't gonna be substantive changes that would have impacted their review.
So, no matter what, we won't have four on September fourth to be...
But that would be before the zoning boards anyway, which I, it would be in the same place, so I think it'd be after the zoning board.
Which is...
It would be October second.
That's six weeks from now.
And then we got a twenty-day appeal on top of that, so...
We're looking at November.
Oh, you're gonna get, you're gonna get the other one anyways, so you gotta, you gotta get them both.
So, you'll hear within the zoning board's twenty-one-day appeal period.
I mean, is there anything that's preventing us from taking a vote on that?
No.
I mean, I know, you know, you're mentioning ZBA is always, we did, or we've always waited for the ZBA, but is there anything in writing to that, or is it just kind of a, hey, that's why you're always...
No, because this is that weird, that process that we've kind of been following for the past, what, eight months-ish? So, I would say, if there are implications to the zoning board not approving it first, I can't speak to that right now, I don't know the answer to that, that is my concern, where that was the process that I believe was what legal entity did when a question came up.
I mean, there's only board has already, is already approved Phase One, right?
Correct.
And this is actually an amendment to Phase One.
No, this is a, so, I just wanna confirm, you're looking at Phase One, it's a separate parcel though, right?
Right, this is a separate...
So, top, totally separate. I think you're thinking of the other one, Manny, that came up.
Yeah, if I, if I could just, on the first, Manny's Phase One, the building that he's under construction now, you guys did go first on that one, because in the ZBA decision, it specifically says the planning board, you know, has granted site plan approval. You guys went first on Manny's building that he's building right now today. Planning board did go first on that one. It's the same, I mean, it's in the same zone, it's the same process, you know, that we've been dealing with the last eight months, but they did, you guys did go first the last time.
I can, I can almost see not doing the site plan approval, which we do not need in a special permit.
You only need a majority.
You only need the three. And, but having, having that, for them, our input is, is good also, so for us to have input, because it's a recommendation to the building, the department, building commissioner.
If, I mean, Mr. Chairman, if, if we're gonna split the two, vote on the special permit and hold on the site plan.
Yeah. That's the way I'm thinking.
Yeah, and that would, you know, that would be fine with us, especially because the site plan doesn't have an appeal period.
Right.
The, you know, the special permit has the appeal period. So, you know, I think we'd be happy if we could get the special permit out of the way and get the clock ticking on the appeal period, and then, you know, if we come back after the ZBA votes on the twenty-second or whatever that date was in September, you know, we came back on October fourth just for site plan approval.
Yeah.
I think that would be okay.
Or in fact, we could, September the fifth, that first meeting in September is gonna be busy, and anyways...
I think it'll be the October meeting, though.
But again, you want to go, you want your site plan after the ZBA, so it'll be that October meeting, no matter what.
Actually, no, I wouldn't mind doing the site plan approval before, just for input for them, because if we see something, because...
Yep, no, I understand, yeah.
On occasion, we've seen, seen things that, that they may want to vary...
I get you. So, then why don't we do them both, so...
That's why it was nice when we did them both together.
Yeah.
But...
So, what are the ramifications if, and I'm asking the question, if we vote today to, you know, approve it, what's the ramifications if we go to, you know, ZBA and they say, no, we won't grant you a special permit, everything's in void, right?
Just to modify it. So, that, that's our risk, okay?
That's our risk.
Well, and I, what I'm saying is, I'm not clear that is the only risk. I don't know if that's the risk to the town. I understand... I understand that would be your risk.
Right.
I, I don't know if there's an implication legally if they get the approval from you.
I'm saying, if the risk was on my end, I'm, I'm willing to take. If the risk was on your end, then I can't make that decision for you, but if it's on my end.
I just don't see why this isn't an amendment to the first one, because we talked about the whole parcel project.
So this was the, if you remember, the A and R had the three different parcels? This is a separate project?
Yes, actually. Yes, but we talked about.
We did.
This area.
We, we.
It's a different lot though.
It's a different lot, it's, it's, yes, it is.
It's a different lot.
We came in for Form A for the first piece to carve it out, so it is, it is.
I, I know, it's confusing, it's, it's got a lot going on up there.
I'm sorry.
Slow down, that's a building.
Yeah, yeah, it do. When, when is the ZBA meeting?
Um, it is September twenty-fourth.
Can I ask something, Tracy?
Sure.
There's no way we can get on the September fourth one, right?
Well, I'm looking at it and I don't think they had an early September meeting.
Oh, maybe that's why.
They, they, they have been known to only meet when they have an accumulation of stuff. They don't, we meet first and third, they don't have like a.
Set schedule.
Set schedule.
It does need.
It's always been that way.
And they had a hearing scheduled for the twenty-fourth, so I think that's how it landed there.
Gotcha.
So, and we're gonna be meeting.
Before the meeting.
No, fourth. All right, okay, sorry, run one.
So they're, they're not meeting till after that, so then, then the next meeting will be, the meeting line will be October the two, October the second. So is that what you're proposing that we wait till, Tracy, October the second?
If you were doing it after zoning, it would be the, the October second meeting, yes.
But again, we won't have four members, right?
October the second.
October the second, we will. But can we still do the letter thing of conditions, which is, is.
We, we, we could, we could have everything, uh.
I mean, that isn't a condition, that isn't a condition of zoning.
No, we, we're gonna have our conditions.
Site plan is, has conditions of zoning, but this water protection is an overlay and has nothing, I mean, it isn't pinpointed to just towards zoning issue.
No, well, it, the water resource protection is a zoning issue and that's what it pertains to, it is zoning, but it isn't the, the zoning that, that, it's another section of zoning that you need.
Yeah, definitely.
Hundred percent, hundred percent. So I guess what I'm talking about is, God, is it went first last time, what changed this time? And we were already in the pipeline, probably, so say my grandfather in, or anything?
Can I just ask a question, as to, I don't know what specific decision you're talking about when you say.
The first for six eighty-six Manley Street, zoning, zoning was first and then.
No.
Go ahead.
Planning was first.
Planning was first.
Planning was first and then we got zoning, ZBA.
Planning, conservation, and then ZBA.
And then ZBA.
Right, so that.
And was it ever amended? I'm just, the only reason I'm thinking it through is because there was, there was a period of time when the planning board was hearing everything.
Mm-hmm, no, and we.
No, no, we had to go.
Yeah, because we, Attorney Burke argued that point and went to town council and town council said, no, it goes to, ZBA grants a special permit and then planning board grants a site plan and the, the special permit for the, for the watershed protection, so town council wouldn't, we were trying to do everything through you folks, Attorney Burke was, and town council shut that down and said it's always been done this way with ZBA gets it. But again, on, on that project, on Manny's building that's under construction right now, you guys voted first on both the site plan and the special permit, and then we went to ZBA and, uh, and we're done with them, because it specifically said in the decision, in the zoning board's decision, that planning board had already granted site plan approval. So you guys went first last night, six months ago or whatever it was.
So if we did that, then what changed now?
Because zoning is only saying, are they doing something that's legal in the zone? When they already made the determination, what are you doing, it's legal in the zone?
They have it for this process.
Yeah, they gotta, again, yeah, I, I know what you're saying, they, they've already set a precedent, then, because you, basically you're doing the same thing.
Correct. Also, we've set a precedence on six eighty-six, you're saying, so six thirty should follow suit, is what you're, I'm saying.
Not that it should, but it, it.
It would make sense.
If the precedent is there that they can judge that, I'm not, I, I don't wanna say that they can do anything.
But you would assume if they didn't have a problem the first time, they're not gonna have a problem the second time, right next door.
I mean, they've already said what you're doing is legal in that industrial zone.
Right.
If they had had argument.
Yeah. Oh, and, I think that the, I mean, if we go to the ZBA on September twenty-second and they deny it, you know, we're dead in the water, your approval's irrelevant and Concom's approval is irrelevant, because we don't have a special permit to do what we wanted. So we've got a planning board, it'd be no different than the conservation, then you guys have proven it and Concom denied it. We need everybody's approval.
That's, that's what the confusing thing is, is why they would have pushed it on to us. Because they could have said, yes, you do, you can, no, you can't.
That the answer to that was that, that the, the board wanted any changes to be done prior to him saying yes.
Yeah, but the changes don't affect zoning.
Well, and just, if I could just add a little bit of color to it, so you, they have to make those just same determinations that the planning board makes every time that they approve a special permit.
Mm-hmm.
So in order to do that, they need to know what the final plan looks like. There's, 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 one of the questions that they have to address is whether or not it's an appropriately location, um, for the use and these questions of unaccess that they have to answer, so it's just having that final plan enables them to.
So this, this plan here is the same plan other than those notes that we basically did, uh, you know, we burned them on them, burned the spreaders being five feet or ten feet, so basically it's the same spread, the same plan, just with the revised, um, updates. So again, whatever the board wants to do, I'll be happy to do, like you guys have been great to us, so I'd be happy to do, if we can get started sooner than later, it'd be great, we have to wait, then we have to wait, I understand, I don't wanna put anybody in jeopardy either.
I'm kinda leaning to do, we know what we're doing, I, 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 I'd come back a month and, at least to, to, uh, come up with what the conditions will be, get all of that out of the way.
I mean, that's gonna take a month. I mean, because with the twenty, twenty, twenty-one day and everything, before we can sign it, it's gonna be.
Yeah, it'll, it'll be, but it, it, you gotta, get it out, the, the fact that.
Just, it also, just the, the previous time that we, um, that the board continued it and extended the decision, the decision will be due within thirty days of, um, the closing of the public hearing, so if you close it tonight, the decision's gonna be due within thirty days, just to clarify. Will need to be filed, but you will have already.
I thought we had ten days to file.
When they extend it, when they continued, they also extended the decision deadline.
But normally it's, it's ten days.
Well, I think it's, might be fourteen under the bylaw for.
I, I can't remember exactly, but, yeah, but we, 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 to do it.
But if you vote on it tonight, you're voting on it tonight, that's, that is your decision, so.
It's really, everything's been addressed and we, we care about, the only, only thing is, um, doing the site plan approval, we don't, all we got is, is that plan we don't have, we don't have individual and so on the rule.
But the site plan approval is about a ten minute deal.
Yeah.
If everything, if everything else is taken care of.
And we've already, for the, for the most part, we've, we've seen it as far as access and, and getting to it, um, you don't have anything.
I mean, if he had a whole list of things tonight, that we needed done.
In fact, Manny, can you, can you just bring me up? What she just paved in on? I know it's, that's our idea to a certain extent.
Yeah, that, that's the, the limit of it, but I believe.
There's a few of them.
Yeah.
Okay, so here's.
Actually, this one probably showed that, uh, it's mixed in with, with everything else, but here's, here's the edge pavement right through here and follows, it's underneath the, under that cell, so I could go right up to there.
And then this is all paved out here.
Yeah, exactly.
Yep.
So you, you're paving around here, you got.
Yep, the entrance right here.
You've got just that one entrance coming in.
Yep, yep.
Paving from all the way around here too?
Yep, around there and then.
Okay, and here's another entrance.
Right here, but.
So you do have two entrances.
Yep.
Two out of here. You do, don't have any residents?
No.
Uh, abutting, so we don't, we're not worried about, uh, how about, uh, lighting?
Lighting, uh, we just have.
Yeah, box lighting on the building.
Yeah, just on the building, we've got one, two, three, four, building doors.
Have any, have any outlets?
No. Uh, they were in the, no, in fact, me and Danny wanted, just around the road, we have one, two, three, and I believe it's.
These are outlets?
Yep, yep.
And they all have the, quit on it, like what you got.
Yep, yep, exactly.
And the new style LED lights, even the down ones only.
Yeah.
I mean, they put out so much more light instead of the big three B, three and four by fours that used to go.
Thomas Edison's, what do you got, about a little over a hundred years, years out of it, and then, what do you came up, but it took a hundred years for something to come up better than, yeah. And you get to stabilization and start and ends. Building.
Correct.
For this side, I think we could do the site plan review too, it's a pretty straightforward, it isn't, unlike some of the complicated things we have, it's, in fact, you're, you're your own abutment, John, this.
On both sides.
Both sides.
Yes.
Yeah, I still don't see why we can't do both anyways. And I'm, you know, I know Tracy was saying that, that's the way that we came up with the process, but the ZBA should say something different, require anything different on that plan, they gotta come back here to modification of, you know, both, both, one or both.
Did you get to decide if it's a minor modification or a major modification?
And, and in fact, if it isn't anything that affects the interest of the water resource section of bylaw, we're, they, we're looking at this bylaw, they're looking at this portion of the bylaw. If they change something, but it doesn't affect.
Yeah, sure.
This point, it, it doesn't matter, it'd be a huge issue.
Right. Yeah, I mean, we don't necessarily have to wait for any board, you know, or, you know, we could vote on this before Concom even looks at it, but if that's up to, you know, that's a chance you guys take, it's not.
Yeah, but because it is the runoff water and they handle that.
Yeah, it's, we wanna make sure that they, that they, they've addressed it all and
they're, they're looking at that interest, so that, that one I.
But prior to that, you know.
But, uh.
I mean, this whole thing with Burke, that was the oaks, was whole kill way.
No, it was here.
I, I think he, he had.
That's what it was.
Well, but, uh, you know, specifically, we were trying to get everything, uh, approved by you folks and have no ZBA approval, because that was Burke's interpretation of the, the way the bylaw read, with the town council.
Town attorney.
Yeah, he pretty much said, you know, that's the way we've always done it, we're gonna stick to the way we've always done it.
Are you, do you wanna get through and do the approval and get the decisions and get it, get it moving?
Yeah.
Okay. Now I gotta, now it's my turn, Mr. Barry, to talk.
I will not interrupt, I promise.
No, that's, great, all right, okay, uh, we have to. Okay, uh, review. We're gonna need a, uh, move to find based on information submitted and presented during the review or discussion with board during the hearing, MG, MJM Construction, Special Unit for the Water Resource Protection District in connection with the seven, uh, operation contractors office in Sturgis, six thirty Manley Street, located in the industrial and water resource district, one satisfies the special permit conditions, A through E set forth in the zoning bylaw section seven point five point three point one. Donna?
Yes.
You, you've got all, 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 all this, I, I see you.
Okay.
You just.
Okay.
Do it here.
All right.
But it, you, go ahead and make notes, but I, I.
Shut up.
Okay, I'm reading it into the record, so. Number two, uh, satisfy the conditions A through C set forth in section seven point five point three point two of the zoning bylaw, and three is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning bylaw is subject to, and number four is consistent with the conditions safeguards and limitations thereof. Okay, uh, we'll need to make that a motion and.
So.
And, and, and vote on it, that is affirmative. So we have a motion.
Second.
Second. Mr. Kinnahan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Noes?
Aye.
Mr. Stetson?
Aye.
And Mr. Hurley votes aye, the vote is unanimous of the four present. Okay, then we have proposed special permit, uh, motion, move to grant MJM Construction Corporation and Corporation, all the way down, all the way down. And, uh, condition number one, the, uh, use will remain appropriate to the hydrology and natural departure resource and other characters of the site to be developed. Two, the use will not during construction or thereafter have any adverse environmental, impacts on any of the zones of the water resource protection district. Three, the storage of liquid hazards materials and or liquid petroleum products unless one, the storage is above ground and on the impervious surface, and two, in containers or tanks within an approved and protected structure with a containment system designed to hold, uh, ten percent of the total storage capacity of all containers, or a hundred and ten percent of the high, largest container storage capacity, whichever is greater. Number four, the proposed use listed under zoning bylaw section four point six point seven shall not be allowed in the site except for the storage of liquid hazards materials and or liquid petroleum products that comply with the conditions stated in, uh, number four above. Motorized vehicles and equipment, it will have a potential leak petroleum product, shall not be stored on this gravel surface, these vehicles and equipment should only be stored on impervious surfaces that are tributary to the proposed stormwater system where treatment is provided. Number six, hours of operation to be, um, this is all in industrial zone, we don't have any hours of operation, so that wouldn't be.
Was that a typo, I don't know, it says hours of construction, but.
Oh, excuse me, hours of construction, you're right. I don't, I don't believe in that zone that we do.
I don't even know if that should be in the water resource, that doesn't sound like a condition of the water resource protection.
That'd be on the zone.
Yeah.
Strike number six, okay, you're gonna have to renumber them, Donna. Number seven, material stockpile is not to exceed the, the lesser twelve feet or the height established by the fire department. Proof of recording, the, number eight, proof of the recording, the applicant shall file certified copy of the decision in the public access easement in the registry of deeds, provide evidence of such recording and application to the building department. Provide evidence of such recording and application to the building department. Is there a public access easement on this?
I believe there was. Try to check your recall, public access easement on this one?
I don't think...
You don't recall? So that will, if, we'll take, we'll remove that if it's not in this one.
Okay, just take that one. Yeah, because there's nothing other than...
Nothing related to the solar, or I'm just trying to think of...
Okay.
I mean, the solar is accessed through this piece of property.
And no drainage?
But is solar... Is solar considered public where it's a utility? I know the argument has gone ever since it's come into existence on whether solar is a...
Public utility or...
Public utility or private, and where, if it's a public utility, is what it's on private or public? It's like telephone poles.
Yeah.
Number nine, as-built plan requirement, one, project completion as of plan must be submitted to the building commission and zoning bylaw prior to the issuance of certificate. Mr. Hay, your, Concom also requires that, don't they? As-built plans?
Yes.
Yeah, so that's, it'll be one plan, one plan to take that vote.
Yes, the chairman, I think there were two missing that typically the board puts on. If there's any new tenants or uses, they would need to come back for approval because it's a contractors office and storage yard. So in theory, they could have other tenants come in.
Yeah, it has to be reviewed by the building depart.
Well, I think the, and I think the planning board would want to hear it as well.
Okay. But you're talking, this is in addition there too?
Yeah, typically, you put a condition on that if there's any change in use or a new owner, new starting tenant, they would need to get approval as well.
I know that the special permit we did for Crescent Street, the old Cape Dory, didn't have it coming back to us, but it ended up coming back when we had a problem.
The first one, again, from March 20th. Number 22 was a change of use or a change in ownership shall be subject to review by the building department and the planning board. Change of use or ownership.
Okay, so that's, that's the original one there?
This is the original one I'm flipping through. Because then, when we were talking about that one, Mr. Stetson, you had said, you know, right now Manny knows what the issues are, but if he sells the property, you don't want to hear it from me that I didn't know because he didn't tell me.
Yeah.
So if I buy it...
Yeah, it has to be, it has to be recorded.
Exactly, because technically, you know, if he rents it to somebody, he's still responsible because he's the owner. So it's a change of ownership.
And we had it put in, so it's, it's, it has to be registered. That way, it's legally sitting someplace other than just us telling you.
And when you put it in the condition, the conditions get recorded. So a good attorney's going to look at that and, you know, protect his client and say, hey, you better notify the planning board before you buy it.
And let me just look through Mr. Brennen's because I know he had made some recommendations. Okay, his number 11 is the same as the one regarding the 10%.
Yep.
Designed, so we've already, that's already in here. In fact, that's on the plan, isn't it?
Yes.
It is on the plan, but it should be, it should be in the...
I believe it's number three in the list. Not in his list, but in your list.
Yes, thank you. Okay, and his number 12 is, should, is, we recommend a general condition that the prohibited use is listed in under ZBL section 4.6.7, not be allowed in the site except for the surge of liquid hazardous materials in or liquid petroleum products that comply with the conditions of, okay, now that's just going back to 11. Motorized vehicles. Okay, and he's got the...
That's your number five?
Yeah, that's in there.
And the other condition that was mentioned a few minutes ago is for the annual inspection to the building inspector and to notify the planning board, planning board if the alarms go off on the system.
Head in the hour of the day.
He would get a call specifically.
She sent the board to her.
I'm going to get a call.
That's what the board members said, yes.
That's all the railroad.
I've been thrown under the bus.
We gave up the bus and we use a train now.
It's a train now.
Okay. Are there any other, are there any other conditions in the earlier one that have not been carried for?
We have one that we got.
I mean, the only, you know, parking on paved areas only, but that...
I think, I think that's...
I mean, that's all over the plan and all of his. Yeah, then we had no oil changes, repairs of fueling on the site. But our feeling was that they were allowed inside the building, which is why we've got the floor drains and double wall tanks and all that. But no repairs, I guess you could say no repairs outside the building.
On site.
Well, I think that on site is...
Yeah, on site is what guys like trouble.
That's what's causing the confusion. So I would say if you want to clarify that no, no repairs outside of the building.
Outside of the building, that's the easiest way to say it.
All right, oh, yeah.
So it said the site on the first one. We looked at and said the site means outside. And Attorney Burke, you know, probably want to pat his feet, said, no, I think it's, you know. So Attorney Burke disagrees, so.
The only thing I have with that is, and I do believe across the street from them, we have no oil, no hazardous materials work may be done outside of the building, but we allow them to change tires, light bulbs. I mean, you don't have to pull a trailer in to change one clearance lamp. You can put a ladder up and change the clearance lamp.
Well, he said if you had to change the tire, you should be able to do that without dragging the truck into the...
Yeah, and I mean, changing the tire isn't going to affect the soil.
They don't want to see him take a bulldozer and pull it all apart and, which we have seen.
Have the chance of fluids spilling on the...
The whole purpose of it is fluid going in the ground.
Exactly.
So we say no heavy mechanics outdoors?
Or no repair work involving hazardous materials will take place.
Yeah, that's the one, because you want, you want to be able to go and, you got a flat tire on the truck, you don't want to have to...
I agree.
You got the front tire, front tire on the truck is flat. Now you got to go get a front end loader to pick up that truck, drag it into the...
Drag it 200 feet into the garage.
Wherein, where you can go out there with an air gun and zoot, zoot, change the tire.
No, you're right, no, no...
Yeah, I was going to say, yeah, no maintenance or repair work involving hazardous materials shall take place outside of the building.
Which is a secured area that can take care of all...
It's designed if there is a leak.
It's designed for it.
And that'll be item number 15.
At least 15 on the previous one.
15 on the previous one, I think it is.
Joanna, do, can you give her the number? On the front page, it should be a number, so she...
On the product number?
Four, one, two.
So, just so you can review it to make sure you get the same number.
Oh, yeah.
It's being worded as no hazardous...
Right.
No repair involving hazardous material.
No repairs involving hazardous.
Or maintenance.
That's a lot of...
Or maybe...
Yeah, no repairs or maintenance.
Here, wait a minute, one question at that.
Sorry.
Listen to Jim. He was the author of it.
No work involving, no, no repair or maintenance work involving hazardous materials shall be performed outside the building. This would be oil changes, maintenance, it's not really a repair, but you don't want to do that.
Correct. But you can still, you still get the minor things. Like bulb, windshield wipers, tire change, without having us.
Okay, would somebody make that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Mr. Kinnahan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Noiz?
Aye.
Mr. Stetson?
Aye.
Mr. Hurley votes aye for unanimous of the four present. Okay, moving on. Proposed site plan review findings, move to find that are based on information submitted during the review and discussion of the, during that the 12-page set of plan titles located down there. Where's the revision last, revised to, what you revisioned is?
Page 1224.
Is it still 12 pages? Was it remade, any additional sheets added?
No, it wasn't.
August 12th, Donna?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, is it, and it's still a 12-page, sorry, set of site plans? Is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning bylaw and satisfies the guidelines set forth in section 4.2.2, excuse me, section 7.2.4. Point A through J of the zoning bylaws. Okay, then, I'll move, I'll entertain a motion...
So moved.
To what we just said. Mr. Kinnahan?
Second. Aye.
Mr. Kinnahan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Noiz?
Aye.
Mr. Stetson?
Aye.
Mr. Hurley votes aye for unanimous of the four present. And now we have to propose site plan review motion, move to approve the 12-page site plan title, blah, 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 revise through. So this will be another motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Kinnahan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Noiz?
Aye.
Mr. Stetson?
Aye.
Mr. Hurley votes aye for unanimous of the four present.
Did you approve on that one?
The last one here.
Oh, okay. I just didn't get the margin out of it.
Okay, I don't, we've already discussed if something happens and if it affects this, you'll have to come back. If it doesn't affect this, you're wrong. Is it any, I could close, close the public hearing. We should have closed the public hearing before we voted.
Moved to close.
Mr. Stetson?
Second.
I'll favor closing.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Go to unanimous of the four present.